Good evening, everyone, international parents in Espoo. As I said, I'm Zama Farin. I am coordinator of international affairs at the city of Espoo. And the Espoo Town Hall Meeting is a pilot project that we have. The city is now developing. We have events with changing themes related to the different city units. This is the third event together with the city's Early Education and Education Unit. The events aim to increase opportunities for international residents to feel a sense of belonging to Espoo. And today, we are so happy to be joined by our wonderful colleagues from the Early Education and Education Services in Espoo. This is the agenda for day. We have a lot of participants here today and warm welcome to you all. This event basically has presentations from experts from our city organization. And we have a workshop also together with all of you. Hopefully, you will be active participants. And yes, feel free to start a conversation in the chat box. I'll start with what are the Espoo Town Hall Meetings? Espoo Town Hall Meetings are interactive events in English with changing themes related to the development of the city. And as I said, the events aim to increase opportunities for international residents to influence and feel a sense of belonging to Espoo. The project simultaneously aids the city's understanding of the needs and wishes of the international population in the development of the city services. So in the past, we started this pilot project with the Town Hall Meeting with Employment Services Unit in February. And then last month, we had a really interesting session with the city's City Planning Unit and Technical and Environmental Services. We spoke about urban planning, in specifically Kees Lepavara. And today, we are with our Early Education and Education Services colleagues, and we are here to discuss the webpages that are part of espo.fi that relate to early education and education. We have a few upcoming events in November and in December. In November, the one, the event is, the topic is client processes in social and healthcare services. And on the 9th of December, this pilot project culminates with an event regarding the Espoo story, which is the city's strategy for all. So as I mentioned, the process, it has been, I'm sure all of you know that you have filled in a registration questionnaire and a survey. We get to hear about your needs and wishes about the theme or topic. And we have, today, we have event presentations from a design based on the survey answers from our city experts. And then today, we will have a co-creation workshop as well with participants to find concrete solutions to develop city services. After all this process gets over, we have a feedback session from both participants and city employees, and we decide how do we develop this concept further. And today, we have, the first presentation will be from Katie Smeds. She will be talking about early childhood education in Finland in general. And at this point, I would also, as this, this is one of the initiatives that the city of Espoo has taken to reach out to the international citizens, international residents, international parents in Espoo. We also have some other great resources available online, which I will post in the chat box very soon. One of them is Hello Espoo. Helloespo.fi is the website from the city of Espoo. It has a step-by-step guide for your journey before, during, and after moving to Espoo. And we also have a Hello Espoo Facebook group, which is a platform that offers up-to-date information about everything in English. And I'm also very happy to say that I will be posting the link soon. But very happy to have Paula Elefante here. She is the owner of the Elephant Mum blog. And I would definitely suggest that all of you follow the blog. I will post the link shortly. Yes, so that's all from me. And I will hand over the digital flow now to Katie Smeds. Katie, please.
So hello, everyone. And I hope we will going to have a nice, nice afternoon session here. So this presentation is made by Raja Linee and myself. And Raja Linee is Development Manager in Early Childhood Education. So we're trying to give you like this very, very, very short, like snapshot shot of Espoo Early Childhood Education and Care Services. Let's see if five minutes is enough. Keep your thumbs up for me. So this is the educational system in Finland in one picture. So we are now taking, taking look at the green boxes in the left corner. And we talk about this pre-primary education and then early childhood education and care. Pre-primary education is a phase between primary education for six-year-olds and it's supposed to develop the skills for children to start the school, primary school. So the basic thing is that the municipalities are responsible for arranging the EEC services, meaning Early Childhood Education and Care. And we can decide to provide the services ourselves and then also support the private sector agents. And in Espoo, we have like 30% of our the childhood education provided by private sector. So our work is then secure that quality and supervision and all this kind of support and guidance for these private sector agents. If we take a closer look though of that picture, you can see that Finnish education system is like this continuum. It starts from early childhood education and it ends with PhD. And it really is a continuity between these curriculums. So in, for example, in early childhood education and care and pre-primary education and care, we have very similar contents and very similar targets. And those targets, as we call them, transversal competencies, are also in basic education or primary education core curriculum. So this builds some kind of a continuum of contents and methodology in Finnish school. So let's move on. Now you can see some numbers of early childhood education and pre-primary education volume in the city of Espoo. So we have altogether 142 Finnish language Early Childhood Education and Care Centers and 11,000 children in those. Members of personnel is almost 3,000. And then we have also this 97 privately-run education, early education and care centers. So we have very much this private sector early childhood education. And then we have also 161 Finnish language pre-primary education units, which are basically our daycare centers. So quite many of our pre-primary, our daycare centers also provide pre-primary education. And then we also have this pre-primary education at schools. We have altogether 44 group, family daycare. So that means that one is four children. And then we have also four family daycare areas that do basically the same, but in the bigger group. Then we have also these open activities, 16 resident parks. I hope that you have all had an opportunity to go there. They are really nice and all over Espoo. Then we have these open EEC activity centers, which are like open daycare centers. And then we have also these 30 clubs, meaning that they provide early childhood education for those families who does not need or want to have their child to attend daycare full-time. So this is really good opportunity for families with parents at home. So we provide also this kind of open, open activities. Then we have also very much different language daycare. Like we have many English-speaking daycare centers, French, Russian, Swedish for Finnish-speaking. We also have this Swedish daycare also, but Swedish daycare for Finnish-speaking, meaning specific methodology. And then we also have, at least we had Italian, but we have quite many, many of different kind of language-based activities also. Let's move on. So here you can see a picture of Finnish early childhood education system. If you take a look at the content and methodology and also the targets. And in the most below of this picture, there's underlying values and conceptions of learning. They build this quite solid, solid as a rock, this kind of basis for our work. So we, I'm going to explain it a little bit more in the next slides, but we believe that child is very active and we want to support their active role. In the center is a learning and well-being child. This is the most important thing in Finnish educational system, at least if we take a look at the early childhood education. We think that only child who feels he saw herself very well and feels that she's taken care of and supported in things where they need support, they will learn the best. So that's why we always emphasize this well-being and will focus on that one. So you could say that Finnish early childhood education system is very child-oriented. We always want to concentrate on children's interests and needs. You can see it on the left side of this picture. And then based on these, this knowledge, their interests and needs, we build projects with children. And then our teachers will combine these pedagogical ingredients, as you see in the right side, which word of language is diverse forms of expression and so on. So we will combine these two elements and then build projects and study different kind of phenomenon or phenomena with children. And then we, at the same time, we support these transversal competencies, which is the goal of this, of this whole system. So let's take a look, look what these transversal competencies are. These are the same for early childhood education and pre-primary education. And they will continue, or they go as well to this primary education, this basic education. So it's, there are two small differences. In pre-primary education, this multilitrocity and competence in information is split into two different kind of competencies. But in early childhood education, we combine it. And then, then when we move on to this primary education, then we talk, add one more and it's entrepreneurship. But basically, the same idea goes through the whole system. So the transversal competencies are knowledge, skills, values, attitudes, and will of a student that they will, they will get stronger all the time with these kind of things. And then we have gathered some priorities of Finnish early childhood education. I might have mentioned it before, but let's stay for a while in these topics. As I said earlier, the child's overall well-being is in focus. And that is one thing we call our model, this EduCare model. Many, in many countries, if you take a look at like three-year-old children, it's divided to school and then this care. But we combine these two elements to EduCare model. So we provide this, also this care and teaching in same places in daycare centers. So that's why we call it EduCare model. There are both, both elements present at the same time. We also think that children are in active role and we want to support their participation in planning, evaluating, and creating different kind of pedagogical work in our daycare centers. Well, so basically, that means that our teachers plan the activities with the children. Children can, can also say what they enjoy and what wasn't so nice. Finnish system is very individual. We make individual plan for every, every child. And we do not believe in standardized testing. So we, we have no learning standards and we do not measure them. So we support every child's individual path in early childhood education and pre-primary education. We also believe that cooperation and participation of guardians is very, very significant part of our work. So we want to emphasize you all to participate our work. So in practice, that means that we, we want to discuss very much different kind of things with you. And then we also want to ask your opinion in many, many questions. Play is the main way to achieve these learning targets or these transversal competencies. So we want to support children to play as much as they can. So if your child comes home from daycare center and you ask, what did you do? And then she or he tells you that we only played, that is always the best day. We believe that that is, that is the most, most important thing. Also, we believe that nature is a significant environment. And this is something very Finnish that we also, also use nature as, and outdoor activities as one of our main, main places to learn. Integrated learning modules, I already mentioned. I mean, this kind of projects, studying projects with children. We also do very much cooperation with libraries, orchestras, artists, museums, and physical activity organizations, et cetera, et cetera. We think that children are active part of community. So they, they are entitled to see and hear and make all this kind of things. And they are also visible in our community. So we like to them go around, round as much they can, except now when it's Corona time. We use also pedagogical documentation as a working method of evaluating our work. Then we also provide inclusive provision for special needs. So we think that every night, a child is entitled to go to the next door daycare center. So we don't exclude special needs children to different places. One of the, of the main things is that I want to emphasize is that our service fees are moderate low because we, they are subsidized by the city of Espoo. So, so this early childhood education system is very affordable to everyone. And also, also everyone can have this opportunity to make their own choices and about how they will, will take care of the, of the early childhood education. So we have many, many different kind of opportunities. So I think that was everything I, I wanted to tell you. Time is running. I thank you all for your interest and, and let's, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. That was surely interesting. The education system in Finland is well-renowned. And I think we got a clearer picture about how and what goes on.
I'm Susanna Nikko, and I work in, as a communication manager in education and cultural services in city of Espoo. And I'm here to talk about you about the new espo.fi website. This new website will later replace the current website. Espoo.fi is the most important communication channel where we share information regarding the city of Espoo. We are building up the new site so that all the information would be found in one place. For example, all the general upper secondary schools will have, will be in this same site, even though they currently have their own sites. Also, we have to build new sites now because technology behind the current site does not meet all the expectations we are currently having. Building of the new espo.fi site started a couple of months ago. And we will be beta testing, in the beta testing phase, in the beginning of the next year. So this means that all the citizens of Espoo are able to test the site in January via the current website. This new site will replace the current site in summer. We will pay special attention to the accessibility of the site. Color contrast will be, will increase. All the content will be readable by reading programs that people with disabilities use. We will also pay special attention to the translations of the text and make more of them and make them more understandable. Also, the search function of the site will be much better than in the current site. That's mostly the new technologies we are able to use in the new site. And actually, most importantly, the structure of the new site is not built on the base of the internal structure of the city of Espoo, but on, based on how your citizens want to find the information from the site. This is the prototype of the new site. At the left side is the search box, which plays quite important role in the new, new sites as we are aiming to make it much more researchable than the current sites are. And below it, you will see the sections the site will be divided into. Categories are health, living, culture and free time, support to your daily living, street and traffic, and sports and outdoors. You will see the best site in January, as I said earlier, in current website, if you wish to test it. And I of course hope that all of you will because all the feedback we might get is really valuable. And that's the short presentation of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susanna. We actually have a quick question for you from Paula. She asks about the website. Will you keep and possibly expand the cool multilingual smart board that you set up for Corona? I fell in love with it, is what she says.
Oh, that's great. Yes, we have no intention of removing the smart board book. It has been really useful during the Corona time.
Yes, sounds great. Well, thank you, Susanna. Thank you so much for that presentation. It's really great to get a look at the, at the website that's coming up soon. We have Eva Kaisa Aikonen here. And as you heard, Katie Smeds spoke about early childhood education. We have Eva Kaisa, who will be speaking about basic and upper secondary education. So yes, let's, let's have Eva Kaisa on the floor. Thank you.
Hello to everyone. I'm Eva Kaisa Aikonen. I'm the superintendent of the Finnish education in Espoo and responsible for the professional learning of teachers and also the curricula and the improvement of our education. So, and we will be working on some renewals of the whole national renewals as well. So Katie, thank you to Katie also. She gave a good start to this presentation of mine as well, explaining about the whole ideology and the continuum that we have here in Finland. And I hope my presentation will sort of lead it forward. So you get the idea of the first, the primary and pre-primary and early, early, early childhood education as well as the secondary level in general. And before starting, I will give a brief overlook on the Espoo field of schools. We have, I think it's 77 or 76 Finnish-speaking basic education schools in Espoo, including the Espoo International School in English. And then 10 Finnish general upper secondary schools, that means Lukio. And also the Swedish-speaking education is there in addition to this, this amount. And so the, the school units vary from very small ones in some regions, like maybe 60 pupils in, as a whole, in one school, up to 800 or almost 1,000 in others. So we still have a really big variety there because of the geography, actually. But well, maybe some changes will, will arise there. And we have around 35,000 students in our schools. And it's rising every day, actually. And especially international families are coming to Espoo, which is a great thing. So to the Finnish system then, the backbone of our system is equity. And we are sort of well-known of it so that every child and youngster has a right to free, high-quality education. And no doors are closed. If you take one step somewhere and choose a school, then you can always go further, like in the, in the graph that Katie showed you. You saw lots of arrows there. So there, there's always possibilities to go further. And that is our goal to, to rise the, the average level of our schooling even further. So that in 2030, there will be 50% of our young adults that have university or college degree in their hands. So that is our aim. And, but there are still things to do to improve the equity concept in, in the Finnish school. You know that world is changing rapidly and we have issues with families and in Espoo as well that need, need us to focus more on to help everybody to really reach their own highest potential through education. And we have very good trust in schools. Like Katie said, the neighborhood or the nearby school is, is the best choice for, in our minds, to every child, they can connect with their own friends and neighborhood kids in their own school. And, and the traffic is not so bad and so on. So every school in Espoo is a, is a very high-quality school. So you don't need to worry about getting sort of enrolled in a specific school to get a good education for your child. So that is something that we are very proud of. And also our teachers, as you might well know, And also, our teachers, as you might well know, are highly educated. They have a master's degree in education or some other like their own subjects. And so it's valued and it's very popular still. And teachers feel happy about their jobs. And but we still need to, of course, as a city, to support our teaching staff. They have a very important role in our society. And also, as you know, the compulsory education is free of charge in Finland and also so is the secondary and even the university-level education. But in the latter phases, you need to buy your materials and and bus tickets and so on. But but that that will be changing a bit later on. I will tell you about that. But in any case, the money is not the matter or the how the the family is doing economically. So we are providing the opportunity to to go to school for everyone. Yes. And now I'm missing, yes, I made up some kind of animation there by accident. Sorry. So the our education system is very actually quite strongly guided from the the national level. So it's all based on the legislation, the Basic Education, General Upper Secondary Education Acts, and also the division of hours between the subjects are legislated nationwide. So Espoo has some extras there, though, but but the minimum is is the same in the whole country. That is a way to ensure the the equity also geographically. And those goals that I have written there are from the 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 Acts, the Basic Education Upper Secondary. Those are the things that we are aiming at. And they, as you can well see, they are very valid in this time of the time of history, as well as in the future, to sort of build a sustainable life and world to everyone. And also that the the every child and all all young Finnish people or all citizens have capacities to to take charge of their own lives and be an active member in the society to build a better life for himself, herself, the immediate family and also the the whole of Finland and globally. And the national core curricula in in all all stages, they guide us a lot like why and how and what we are teaching in schools. And you have heard of Finnish the teachers autonomy and also the school autonomy. And that is based on the high skills of teaching and the staff. But so that the autonomy is it covers the what we're do actually doing in the school with these specific pupils or this group now and in the future. So the teachers have wide range of sort of practices and skills to use and to how to and choose some ideas and subjects and and themes. Of course, based on the core curriculum and the local Espoo curriculum, but also with everything they know and can and their best knowledge. But still, we do have a very strong guiding document there nationally. And we the local Espoo curriculum is sort of just giving some highlights or features that we have here to sort of make it come closer to our school life. So Espoo curriculum is very much the same that in Vanta or Oulu or Tampere. They are not differing very much. And also the schools, the school curriculum is curriculum is more more like the description of the school culture, how it looks every day when your child goes into the school, how they're working there. Of course, there is a strong part of school culture in the national curriculum as well. We are believing in in learning organization theories in in learning as well. So that is the basis for for everything. And Katia talked about this already, how we have the focus on the child or the learner. And that is something very important to the Finnish system and the building of learning skills. That is even more important now when the the future is somewhat unknown and the work-life is changing and everything. So you need to have this continuing and this continuous learning skills or lifelong learning skills, every each and every one of us. And in some international news, you might have read that Finland has got rid of all subjects. They are just working with phenomena or or something like that. That was dis or misinformation. And I know who was the the guilty one, my colleague in Helsinki. She was sort of interpreted wrongly there. We have a strong basis of academic subjects and and also arts and home economics and P E and so on. And these competencies are brought to your child through these subjects. We are learning about communication and problem-solving and collaboration citizenship and so on in all classes. So that's the way we're doing. Of course, these subjects like like English and chemistry can do joint projects, and that's very, very good to do it so well. So but but still, we are relying on those. And the very Finnish feature is the role of assessment in our newest curriculum, both for general upper secondary and basic education, is that the assessment, student assessment, is for to support and guide the learning process. It's for learning. It's not assessment of learning that much. Of course, that in the end of each school year as well. But like Katia said, we don't believe in in standardized testing or national exams and so on. But we think that during the school year, when the teacher and family and the student are communicating about the learning, that's the way, best way to sort of promote the learning process and not just to grade people and say that you are doing very good or or not so well. Also, we don't believe in in comparing students to each other. And we are not electing the the best academic child in this class every week or whatever. We see that every child is going their own way, but and our own path, following their own path, but the goals are are mutual. And the ways to reach them are different. And and each one is entitled to the support and guidance on the way. Collaboration of school staff is very important and we have, we are sort of lone wolves. We're Finns, I think so. So that is something that we are working on more and being more sociable and working together. And it's it's going very well at the moment, actually. And then a couple of more slides. I talked about this change. Our present government is very feeling very strongly about extending the compulsory education sort of to meet the idea of K twelve education, actually, starting from pre-primary to ending in the end of secondary education. So that every every single student gets the secondary education diploma, either from the vocational side or or through a general upper secondary. And this will start next August, actually. So the changes will be coming very soon. That's something exciting that I'm working on in Espoo. And that will change that the the materials and the computers and in some cases, even bus tickets will be provided by the schools, even in Lukio or in Ammatillinen or vocational school. Now the the families need to purchase those. And there are some changes in the education to ensure everybody keeping up with the the flow. So a lot of support is provided. Oh, that was the last one. If you wish to see more about this national guidelines and and briefings or and nutchels, please be welcome to follow those links. And I wish this speech was of some use to you. Maybe some of you knew all of this already. But I hope I could give some insights and ideas to your discussions later. So enjoy your evening and have a good workshop, every and each one of you, and we'll meet again, I hope.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Eva Kaisa. Yes, we 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 have we have a whole conversation that's going on in the chat box and I actually forgot to mention that we're so happy to have Anni Marie Rappo here today. She is the principal of the Espoo International School. And so she has been answering some questions in the chat box. And I would urge Katia, Eva Kaisa, Mia, if if there are any questions that you can answer, please go ahead and do so so that we have we can compile these all the same when we send the follow-ups.
Maybe, yeah, maybe I'll just pick the one one notion there about no no tests. I I hope I didn't say that we have no tests or exams. We don't have these these nationwide testing that rates pupils or schools. Or it just the 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 in the end of the upper secondary education, we have this matriculation exam. Otherwise, those are, of course, for the assessment purpose in school to guide the learning and teaching for the for the teacher and for the family. So and homework, of course, we do have. That was one of our ministers that said internationally in news that Finnish children do not have homework. And that was untrue. Of course, we do. But but it shouldn't be like your children are doing homework all night. That is not the Finnish way. If that happens, that's too much. And we do not have extra hours sort of second school day private teacher teaching system like in some countries they need to have. So I if if the pressure is awful for your children, please contact the principal. It's not the way we are supposed to be doing it. So that's all. I will close my my part here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Eva Kaisa. Yes, we do. We are running out of time, but let's do our best to. But yes, there's a there's another another sort of misunderstanding about English being an official language in Espoo. Though the city of Espoo has been for many years developing communications in English to better help international residents settle in, English is not an official language in Espoo. But we have the English as a Language of Service project, which which I will talk briefly about here. And just to just to clear out this misconception that English is an official language in Espoo. So the project is to support services development and Espoo is developing these services in order to offer good customer experience to English-speaking Espoo citizens. And the goal is to offer more opportunities in the future to people who have moved from abroad to Espoo to involve themselves in and be part of the community. And access to services will be improved in services that are essential to customers. And this project has been going on for some time now, around two years. And English-speaking services also help to have international activities that include developing services for international residents and communicating about city services in an accessible and easy-to-understand form, taking into consideration the linguistic and cultural backgrounds of the residents. And of course, another goal is to increase the city's appeal and to attract international businesses. English is developed as a language of services to basically met meet the overall needs of Espoo citizens. And again, yes, English is not an official language in Espoo. And what has been done so far? So we thought we would give you a quick look about the concrete actions or plans that that are here in the Education and Cultural Services especially. So as part of the communications webpages have already been translated and applications forms are also being translated. I think what we all need to understand that it's a work-in process and that translation of a whole system from one language into another requires resources, like a lot of resources. And however, the communications, through the communications by increasing the share of news released in English and developing of content and accessibility of webpages, all of these are getting there, are getting the city of Espoo at a place where we have almost everything accessible for English-speaking residents. And then for the education services in particular, the expansion of Espoo International School to Ottenemi is the Kivinjemen Kolu in autumn two thousand and twenty. And then there is a pilot, a bilingual Finnish English daycare center in Ottenemi, Kivinjemen Pavakoti, again, autumn two thousand and twenty. And then there is language education as well, which is also pilot. So there are a lot of programs and education services that are being done. City of Espoo is also preparing to launch a research collaboration with the University of Helsinki to develop the city's multilingual and intercultural communication. And the language and intercultural communication skills of city employees have improved. I think the city of Espoo is moving towards a future where there will be, there is an increase in number of non-Finnish and Swedish-speaking population. And there there are still programs that are being considered so as to have the city organization reflect the population, so to speak. And so, yes, so that's that's about that. And there is in this slide, we have the Terolo Himmaki's picture. He's the project manager of English as a Language of Service project. You can see his email address as well. And please feel free to get in touch with him to talk about your needs. As as we have seen from the survey questionnaire, I feel like a lot of there are a lot of great input from all the participants here. And also, we have Yasmin Repa, who has also joined us today. She is the Deputy Deputy Head of International Affairs. And so please feel free to get in touch with her or Temmuha Pelleto, who's the manager of Immigration Affairs in the International Affairs in Espoo. So yes, that's about the English of the Language of Service program. And now we are moving on to the results of the pre-event task and introduction to the workshop. So, yes, the next slide. So coming on to the results of the registration survey. And I have to say that we got some amazing input from all of our participants and a lot of similar ideas as well. So we look at what is easy to find and understand, basically what works. We got a really, we got really great comments and appreciate what is already there, comprehensive and structured information where a lot of information regarding regarding education and prospects for students are present, including including things like requirements for getting into Lukio and how municipal and private daycare works, all of that. Then there are a bunch of people who said everything is quite clear on Espoo website, general description, options and procedures, general information. And then there are more people who said basic information is available, that is things that can help them get by, so to speak. Basic information about schools, location, kindergarten name, all of that. And then even when we asked for appreciation, there are a few people who also spoke about things that could be improved, that there is some information that's missing. And these have also been really important feedback for us. So it has been it has been a struggle to understand the curriculum. And we'll see more about this in the next one, where we asked, what could be better? What could what could be done? Again, I would like to clarify that we have a lot of conversations. Again, I would like to clarify that we have a lot of conversation going on in the chat box about the education system here and about the nitty-gritties of that. But today's event was primarily designed to talk about the webpages, as it was clearly mentioned in the in the event. And we have a lot of ideas on this about what could be better regarding things that are that that lie outside of the scope of the webpages. But still, it's really great to have these. So we'll go through these, what could be better? The big picture. So a lot of you said that a big picture of the education path, future, sort of how how do we prepare for our children, what what they'll need in a few years? And curriculum details, including syllabus. This was mentioned in the in the chat box as well. And then, of course, a lot of people are interested in English schools. How do you apply to English schools? What is the test pattern? What if you get refused? Your child gets refused due to full places? How can you apply to municipal daycare if you're not? All of these information could be added to the webpages, is what we have, or could be more easily accessible. Because we have seen that some of these comments, some of the information is already available, but probably not as clearly accessible. And then explanation of Finnish education system. Today, we have, we've had some great presentations from Eva Kaisa, Kati and from Susanna Nikko. So we have talked about the IBIGC pattern and things like that. And then there is information in English that that could be better. What are the, what are the options when it comes to daycare centers, infrastructure, staff, practices? More information about Finnish, English, Swedish daycares, the menu of food that is served in the schools, a lot of things in English. Then we have native language studies. How how are the native language studies organized? What are the rights? As we, as I, as as up to, what I know about it is that there is a specific number of students that should be up to learn a native language for the classes to be organized. But this is something that a lot of our international residents are interested in. Then entertainment and after-school activities or clubs, that's something else. And these two also stood out in all of the comments. One is international parent support groups. Now, again, this is something that probably is not directly related to the webpages, but is important, as well as extra help for special needs. And then we went on to your ideas. How could you improve? What what would, what could the city do to better meet your needs regarding information about early education and education? So about information on webpages, of course, more information in English, more detailed information about applications, harmonizing the Finnish and the English versions of the website, transparency in native language studies. What are the grounds on which administration decides which daycare location will be offered to a specific child? General capacity and waiting list. All of these are quite reasonable information that should be available on the webpages. And then some great ideas, online videos, a video with how the educational system works in Espoo, how parents can apply for daycare, weather-related clothing, tailored information page for international residents regarding general updates. So something, something specifically designed for the international parents. Online system, more surveys. So that was great to see, that that you would like to have more surveys to assess parent satisfaction. And then guidance for international parents. This is also a great example of of a great idea. How how about individuals acting as guides to new parents or those unfamiliar? And regular orientation and info sessions. And then better communications between teachers and parents. That's also something that that has been spoken about. How could the city better meet residents' needs regarding information about early education and education?